Thank you for attending today's council meeting. We're happy to have you here on a gray day. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. By Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 4-0 vote for the clerk. The clerk would read the changes, please.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item 4A, ordinance to amend section 1512, appendix A for the compensation schedule. To the consent agenda, we're substituting 5F, exhibit A only, resolution amending the budget for employee pay increases, and substituting 5Q, resolution amending resolution number 73120.
There's a motion to approve the amended agenda by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right. That brings us to the presentation agenda and the mayor's report. Mayor?
You can hear me now? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. We welcome everyone to our meeting before, you know, Christmas and holiday season. We'll have one more, I believe, at the end of the year. So we look forward to the season. I have one thing to report. We'll be opening the bids at the conclusion of this meeting for depository proposals from Bank Corp. South, Hancock Whitney, the First, and the People's Bank. So at the conclusion, we'll come to a decision on the two years, from January 2021 through December. And please, spread this to the minute of the meeting. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel reports. Mr. Glavin?
Of course, I want to wish everyone a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas. And I hope everybody gets to spend some time with their families coming up and really gets to enjoy that special time of the year here, especially in Biloxi. Couple of things on Royal. There's a Royal Circle in my ward. It's over in the North Haven area. There's some trees that are blocking some streetlights. I had a resident complain that she had her car broken into twice in the last 10 days. And it's very, very dark. And they do have cameras, but because it's so dark, they can't pick up anything. If we could take a look at that, maybe Public Works take a look, make a recommendation to, I guess that's Coastal Electric that services that area, and see if we can maybe shed some light on that area, if we can.
Royal Circle?
Royal Circle, Royal Street, yeah. It's over in the North Haven area. There's about, I guess in that little circle, there's probably about four houses in that little dead-end cul-de-sac. The other thing, I just want a couple of loose ends. I know you're probably on the radar, but we had that drainage issue over on Campbell Drive. Just want to make sure that that's still on the radar and that it doesn't get kind of lost in the shuffle. We also have a drainage issue over by Tribe Drive from the apartment complex. It's kind of overflowing in that area. Spoke to Mr. Course the other day. Of course, Construction, he owns a home there. He said the ditches are even filling up with that overflow. And then he said he's never seen his yard be saturated that much, where he can't even, you know, he can't even go in his yard without sinking. He can't even cut the yard or do anything in the yard. So we just kind of keep that on the radar. I'd appreciate it. And then I believe it was over on Ellington. We had a resident that complained about a sinkhole. And I haven't heard anything if that's been remedied or I think you still have it in the hopper. If I can just maybe get an update at our next meeting on those three issues, I'd appreciate it.
Remind me the address, sir?
On Ellington? Which one? On Ellington, I'd have to get you the specific address. I sent an email to you, but I'll, after this meeting, I'll follow up and send you that.
I'll do it. I'll do mine.
Mr. Lawrence?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Have great weather. Have a lot of time with your family. Have a lot of cocktails. Enjoy yourself. And eat as much food as you can, Peter. I don't want you to get too skinny, you know? I don't recognize you get too skinny over there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Y'all have a great time.
That's it?
That's it.
Another Christmas prayer answered. Mr. Guines?
Yes, sir. I want to start off real quick. I want to ask Mr. Gray to come up real quick. He's been having a little problem with this, from the infrastructure deal. And he had a little issue. He wanted to talk about it a little bit and something that we need to just kind of be aware of when it comes down to our wrap-up. And he was talking with our project manager. And we want to kind of get the right process going. So, Mr. Gray?
Greg, hello. Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Gary Gray. I'm the owner of 3001 Hardingham Avenue. During the time of construction, when the construction crews came through and laid the new sewer and water lines, they did not connect my property to the new sewer lines. They put a new sewer connection there, but it doesn't go anywhere. Discovered that out by having, doing some digging, figured out that they were a good five feet from where they needed to be. I was told, we had the city project manager come out and take a look at it. I was told to get the repairs made and send the bill in. I did send the bill in. That was October 5th, and I still have not received any reimbursement or anything for that. The amount of that was $2,140.
Yeah. And so the only thing that I was suggesting that, you know, through our project manager, that we get a set way of doing things because he told him that he would sign off on it. And that was incorrect. We knew it had to go through an arbitration process. And what I was, had a problem with is just knowing the right procedure. And that way, Mr. Gray could have, you know, made provisions to do it a different way or have it done a different way. So just wanted to make a note of that. Thank you, Mr. Gray, for that.
Okay. Thank you.
On another note, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Christmas parade we had this past weekend. We had a great marvelous time. We know it wasn't, the weather was, you know, rain was on and off, but it came off with a blast. We had a great time thanks to our police and fire department. That was great. I wanted to jump on the fire truck, but I didn't. Next time, I'm going to get on the fire truck. They all came out. We did well. And after the parade, everyone went over to the Gruet Center, where I want to name my sponsors off because, I mean, they donated almost 500 toys. And we had about 300 people to show up to distribute toys among the East Biloxi community. And so Premier Tax, IDR Insurance, Hair Fetish, Nori Boutique, Biloxi Oaks, Grace Temple, Hornsby Watts, Keeping Tasty, and a special thanks to Marquita Piramas, Crystal Bean, Abreana Bell. I mean, those ladies, they put it together. They came out and they made sure every child left with a toy. And some of them left with two or three toys. So we had a great time. So I want to definitely give those kudos. And everyone out there, we got more sponsors set for next year to continue to go on. So without, yes.
Good job.
Yes. And Sherri Bell, thank you. Sherri Bell gave us, I mean, it was just marvelous out there from start to finish.
I have one question, though. Who sponsored that jacket you were wearing? Who sponsored that jacket you were wearing?
Oh, okay. That was compliments.
The Christmas jacket you were wearing. You were styling, man. You were styling.
Yes. So again, thank you, guys. Thank you, administration, for donating the building and everything. And as I do every Christmas, Felix, now we die.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman?
Yes, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year for all, hopefully better than the previous two.
I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas as well. And if you're on the roads, please have a safe trip going and returning. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. President. How can you forget the unforgettable? I did forget Ms. Susan Hunt to come up and Anna to give us a report.
They told me I had to use it. I just want y'all to know, I think we told you that with the Coastal Mardi Gras Museum, that every three months, I will be up here doing this to introduce to you Anna Harris, our executive director, who's going to give you a very short report about what we're doing at the Mardi Gras, at the museum. I do want to thank all of you for all your support and everything that you do. I am going to hand you out a quarterly report that we do along with Get the Good Times Rolling Again. All right? Here we go. Ms. Anna Harris, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're so excited to be here today and to report that over the last three months, we had over 400 visitors from 34 different states and three countries. We received a grant from the National Heritage Area to create a new informational video, and we've started filming that. And in your packet, there's an invitation for you to join us on January 5th and be a part of that video. We will be filming a short second line right on Howard in front of the museum. And we would love for you to come and be a part of that, if you can. Also, don't forget 12th Night with the City of Biloxi will be January 5th as well. We start at the visitor's center at 6:00 PM, where we will turn off the Christmas lights. They will have the short parade to City Hall, where we will turn on the Mardi Gras lights and start our carnival celebration. And we're very excited to have that back this year and hope you will all join us for that as well. And finally, we have a new fundraiser, Get the Good Times Rolling Again, as Susan said. And we'll be selling, pre-ordering king cakes with a little goodie basket, and then we'll be delivering those January 18th and 19th. So please spread the word on that fundraiser. And again, thank you all so much for your continued support of the museum. We appreciate you very much and hope you will all come visit us down on Howard Avenue soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, y'all. Thank you very much. We appreciate y'all. Give all your support. And please let the good times roll. We want to see y'all well tonight, too. That's in your package. Okay? I want to make a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Another late, Ed Danielle and the folks from the Salvation would like to come up and make a little report or just, welcome.
No. Yeah. Shane will give you his mic. Thanks, Amy.
Well, I'm here to, because our little birdie told me that we were on the docket today to get $20,000. Can I say that? But that money goes towards our scholarship program. So if any of you do not know what that's all about, please come to the Croc Center. I would love to give you a tour, walk you around, show what all there is for the children to do. Out of Felix's recommendation, now we offer, we don't even have them fill out paperwork, any child that's 13 to 17 years old, because they can be at the Croc Center by themselves during that time. So we just need their guardian signature, and they're free to come in. But we also are using this money for scholarships for summer camp, after-school care, anytime there's not school in session. We do have camp going on. We have camp going on right now. Christmas camp. So just, the money is definitely needed. It's definitely used, and I appreciate it so much. And I'm just, I'm here to give you a big, big thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it. Merry Christmas to y'all. That's it.
Again.
I'm done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That brings us to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll allot up to 45 minutes for comments cumulatively from those who may be in attendance today. Each individual speaker will be provided up to three minutes. So that having been said, when you're recognized to speak or address the council, if you would, sign in at the table. Say your name clearly so the clerk can record it accurately. And then she'll hit the timer, and your three minutes is beginning, and you're off and running. Is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to address the count? Mr. Higgins?
So I just have my eyes operated on. I can't see, so maybe y'all are going to get off late today.
Okay.
I want to put this, file it in the city record. Copy page 20. Back in August, I saw the, that's a Krill riding around with, in the, one of the higher-ups in the police, our department, in their new SUV. And he jumped up and took a laminated sign off of a telephone pole, piece of paper. Y'all got a copy of the first piece of paper, second piece of paper on it in there. And I couldn't figure out why the city's spokesperson's out riding around untagging telephone poles with signs. And so take your time later and read it. Because all this, I went and took one off the next pole next to it. And then all this does is trying to tell people how to help themselves about following something with the city. And because it doesn't make sense. The city's paying officials to ride around an untagged telephone pole so people can't find out nothing? Because Mr. Tezdel sent a letter to all his constituents that has the same thing in it. And Ms. Newman did the same thing before. And y'all stuff's in there, too. But I'm, I can't, I can't see or read this. I just have my eyes operated on. But I'm coming back next, next month. And I'm going to the next meeting and tell you how to do this homeless thing. Because I've been doing some real, real research on it. Just like right there. If you go back to Friday about 2:00, you watch that homeless guy walk up and get pissed on the front of the damn trees out there standing in the highway like he owns it. He's down there every day selling dope at that kids' park. You got child molesters at that kids' park, living there. It's all illegal. And all y'all got to do is, I'm going to give y'all something to read next month. And every one of these things is, I'm going to give y'all a recommendation. It's legally, and it's tried, and it comes from a city that's about 10 times the size of this one. But you can't have all these people peeing all over and defecating in the middle of that track. And all of them packages hanging in the trees. Go look at the bags, the red bags and stuff hanging in the trees down there. Hell, y'all ever heard of a bomb threat? What if someone nuts puts a bomb down there? Go look down there one day, ride down there, look, ride around real slow, look under that walking track and all the big packages and all. Go down there, throw it all away. And the first person that comes and claims it, write them a ticket for putting garbage, throwing trash out. I just saw where it's $450 fine. Even if they can't pay it, write them a ticket and throw it away. I mean, it's ridiculous. And go down there to where the joints are down the beach.
Mr. Higgins, your time is up.
Mr. Higgins, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
I'm coming in. Also, I have a life threatening that I shouldn't be coming up here. I'll tell you that next time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Is there anybody else on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council? Anybody on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am.
Y'all, Merry Christmas. I don't mean, I just, it's eating me up watching that guy sell dope down there around them kids. I mean, I can catch him and watch him. And if you go back and look, you'll see that guy walk on your.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Thank you.
Hello, the mayor and all the councilmen.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me. If you would, if you'd state your name so the clerk can get your name.
Hello, my name is Sarah Lou.
Okay.
I'm here for the properties at 245 Banachi Avenue.
Okay. And you'll have to hold that microphone close in order to be heard. You're welcome to sit down if you like. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Sarah Lou. I'm here for the properties at 245 Banachi Avenue. Thank you, the mayor's, the councilman gave me the opportunity to be here to speak on my behalf. And I also have my router, Mike Madden from Access Route and speak after me. But before you know I speak, may I pass out the handle? I mean, the handouts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, okay, I'm not your talk. I mean, I read the handout first. That's from my attorney, Hobbit Watts, his office in Biloxi. He said he spoke with the code enforcement department last week on my behalf. And he reviewed the file with the city. And they communicated that you have, if you have the contractor meet with them and can fix the term and damage and health and safety issue, they could reconsider, you know, tearing down the house. But the timeline is very short. I should have the contractor contact the code enforcement today and set up the meeting and nail down the issue for the address. The positive is that they were willing to reconsider. I just received this letter from the attorney a few hours before the meeting today. I flew out from California to take care of the issue. Let me recall, you know, a little bit. My son, he in the Air Force, he serves US Air Force, you know. He worked as a police officer. And I recommend him to buy this house because the agent told me that this house is like a historical landmark to the city. It's situated in the highest location and then a strongest foundation. During Katrina 2005, the house never be flooded by the Katrina or blown away while the whole neighborhood, you know, got affected. And that's why, the reason I recommended for my son, you know, to get the house. And after the service, you know, he can move here to Mississippi from California. But unfortunately, you know, since we bought the house and the house vacant since we bought in 2007, and we spent about $20,000 to rehab the house. We got the brand-new foundation. It's with the bamboo wood and porcelain tile and, you know, painting and cut the crass and, you know, renovate the house. Unfortunately, you know, my son, you know, was in the service, couldn't move in soon.
Yes, sir. Your three minutes are up.
And it's vacant for a while. And I'm not here to.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Your allotted time to speak has expired.
Oh, oh, okay. And I would like, okay, I just came back today and I have, you know.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The, I would like, you know, if you.
But your, but your time is up to speak.
That can hold on the demolition, and so we can walk in the house.
But your time to speak has ended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Madden. I'm a commercial real estate agent with CCIM, which is a, CCIM's a commercial, it's the equivalent of CPA for accountants.
Excuse me. What is your last name again?
Madden.
M-A-D-D-E-N?
Just like the shoes in the football game.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
Anyway, in short, I have been spending the last 20 years, 22 years here on the Gulf Coast, selling to investors. And my history includes, the latest sale in the area was Biloxi Oaks, about 300 units. After Katrina, we, I found investors for over 1,500 apartment units on the coast, and all of them are rehabbed. I've got contacts all over the country. The current house that's sitting out there, 245 Banachi, that's scheduled for a demo, is a good flip. That there was somebody over there from Texas drove over here just to look at it. So your choice is to accept a bid, I think, for $6,400 to get this demoed and have a vacant lot sitting out there for years, or give me about a month to get this thing flipped and get money poured into it, turned into an income-producing, tax-paying, revenue-generating, beautiful house. The house doesn't, it looks horrible from the outside, but once you walk into it, it looks like you're, you just walked into beautiful New Orleans. The hallways and tall ceilings and fireplaces on both sides of the walls. It's gorgeous in there. So again, it's your choice. You can demo it. You have a lot. If you don't, you've got a beautiful house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Is anybody else on my left, your right, to address the council? Anybody on my right, your left? Anybody in the back? Last call for citizens' comments. All right. That concludes citizens' comments. We'll now move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A, please.
Ordinance to amend appendix A of the Code of Ordinance, section 1512.
The move. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Guines. This is a first reading. So that's all the action that will be taken today. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, any questions on any of the items under the consent agenda?
In honor of Christmas spirit, no questions.
No questions. Say that again.
Hello?
I am, another Christmas miracle. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Merry Christmas. Any items, Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman, any items? Mr. Glavin, any items?
I think Councilman Lawrence has a Christmas party that he's trying to get to, but no, I have nothing as well, so.
Okay. And I have nothing either. That being the case, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the consent agenda is presented? It's approved on a 4-0 vote? That brings us to the next item, code enforcement hearings. We have one hearing scheduled for today. Mr. Nolan is in for Mr. Krill today. We'll open a hearing, Charles, the first and only hearing. Charles Pinkston, 2063 Stonebridge Avenue. And there was a 30-day extension granted on November 2nd. Mr. Nolan.
Eric, we give them 30 days. Have they, anything in those 30 days? Do you think we should give another? Would you recommend giving another?
you. That brings us up to a motion for recess till our next meeting on the 20th.
I move, I move we close this meeting in honor of Ms. Claire Rodman, longtime counselor for the City of Biloxi School System and Bishop Marino's system.
Do you want to second it? That's correct.
Very nice lady. Done a lot of good for the City of Biloxi.
All in favor of recessing in memory of Claire Rodman?
Claire Rodman.
It's approved on a 5-0 vote. Thank you. That concludes our meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 28th at 1:30. Thank you.